We're gonna now call our meeting to order, City Palaca Commission Meeting, January 22nd, 2015. We will have our invocation by Reverend Don Hanna, Pastor of St. James United Methodist Church of Palaca.
Gracious God, thank you for this time. I pray your blessings upon our city commission, the leaders and staff as they seek to lead us this night. Be with all those that have matters before the commission. Thank you for this community. Continue to bless and be with us. And we give you thanks. For these things I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. We now have our pledge to allegiance. Mr. Holmes, can you lead us into the pledge?
Please join me as we salute our flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does everyone have a copy of the minutes from our January 8th meeting? I'm sorry, roll call. Commander Plurk.
Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Vice Mayor Brown. Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Norwood.
Present.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
All members are present and accounted for.
Does everyone have a copy of the August 8th minutes? If so, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and promptly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. We now come to the special part of our program, of our agenda, where we get an opportunity to recognize some very special young people that we have in our audience today. We're gonna skip around a little bit. We're gonna go and do our, we're gonna do our recognition. We've got two different recognitions that we have today. First, we have a proclamation and I would ask that Ms. Linda Myers and Jamie Bartholomew, please come up and march a dance. And we have a special proclamation for you today, and it says, "Whereas one in thirty-three babies born in the U.S. are born with a birth defect resulting in billions of dollars of cost of care, accounting for twenty percent of all infant deaths, the March of Dimes, a voluntary health organization begun in 1938 when radio announcer and comedian Eddie Cantur urged his listeners to send their spare dimes to the White House to contribute to a fund for finding a cure for polio, working to assure that healthy lives for American babies. And whereas, for more than seventy-five years, the March of Dimes has been safeguarding America's infant health and has been a pioneer in preventing birth defects, the nation's number-one health problem, through programs of research, community service, education, advocacy, and prenatal care. And whereas, the March of Dimes kicks off its 2015 fundraising season in January, chaired by the March of Dimes Chairperson, Linda Myers, will continue until the official March of Dimes March for Babies event, which was initiated in 1970 to raise funds for the support of critical March of Dimes programs. March for Babies, formerly known, formerly Walk America, has been successful for forty-five years, raising more than $2.3 billion for March of Dimes' mission to improve the health of babies by preventing birth defects and infant mortality. And whereas, the nation's hope for assuring the future generations a healthy start in life depends upon the effort and commitment of all Americans to participate in fundraising events like Pink and Blue Jeans for Babies, the Sale of Chocolate, Footprints, and other, and other government, corporate, and individual fundraising events leading up to the March of Babies, to be held in Palaca on April 11th, 2015, at the Riverfront Park. Now therefore, I tarrel Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim January 20th through April 11th, 2015, as March of Dimes fundraising days. In the City of Palaca, we urge all citizens of our community to support the individual important efforts of the March of Dimes and helping to give babies a healthier start in life by participating and contributing to various March for Babies team fundraisers. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, this 22nd day of January, the year of our Lord, 2015. Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and James Norwood, Jr.
We would love to. First may I introduce Jamie Bartholomew, who is the professional with March of Dimes in the North Florida region, the executive director, and she is also helping us run our campaign here in Putnam County. And I know she probably has a couple of words of knowledge and all that, but all I have is a couple of words of excitement. First of all, to be here tonight when we have families is just awesome because it is all about building families with strong, healthy babies, strong, healthy children. And so, everyone in this community, because we're a small type community, we help each other, we know each other, we know the cost to families emotionally, we know the cost to families physically, and we know the cost to society in our community financially. Those are all the reasons and many more that we intend to raise $139,000 this year in Putnam County. And the thirty-nine, I know the moms in here know what I mean, thirty-nine weeks makes a healthy, strong baby. So that is our goal, to have every child go to thirty-nine weeks. So we're raising $139,000. We kicked this off on Tuesday, and tonight, of course, we have a lot of schools represented. The schools in our community understand, they get it, and they're working hard with numerous teams. If you're not on a team and you are at a school, they would love to have you volunteer. If you're not on a team, I would like to be a team. Give me a call. We've got lots of room, got lots of fun, and I love it. Three months of fundraising, we're gonna work hard. Jamie?
I love how Linda recognized all of you guys in this room, but I wanna recognize this community and Linda as well. Today's the 22nd day of January, and fundraising kicked off a couple of days ago on Tuesday, but people already got started January 1st, and we're already over $10,000 that have been raised in twenty-two days. So that is incredible. You guys should be so proud of your community. That's amazing to do that so quickly. So I just wanted to thank all of your support. This event's been going on for very, very, very many years, and we just always are raising over, I looked at the history this morning, and since 2002, your community's always raised over $100,000 every single wow, which is incredible. So we just can't thank you enough, and I just wanted to reiterate the fact that a lot of us think that the March of Dimes is there for premature infants and, and children that have birth defects, but I wanna say that all of us in this room can consider ourselves March for Babies, or March of Dimes babies because all of the research that's been done in the past has saved a lot of the lives that have been born since polio epidemic. So there's many things that we don't realize that they do in the hospital that we, that the March of Dimes has discovered and made a law that we have to do to every baby to make sure we're all healthy. So just wanna thank you all so much for the proclamation today, and I can't wait to see how much we raise by April 11th. So congratulations and thank you so much.
Let's give these ladies another round of applause. Remember, our goal this year is $139,000. We will now go to our agenda, item one, B, Student of the Month. This is the time that we celebrate our young people, and we're gonna have Commissioner Borum assist me in presentations to our young peoples. So when we call the names of each individual, we have representatives from the school come up, parents, if you wanna come up and join your child, please do so. You can also take some photographs. After we finish calling all the names out, we'll take a break and have an opportunity so that we can actually take your photos, so you can commemorate the moment. All of our certificates read, Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palaca City Commission. This is to certify that each child is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance, and it gives your prospective school. It's given this 22nd day of January, 2015, Mayor Tarrel Hill, City of Palaca, Betsy, Betsy Drigger, City Clerk. And we will call your names out, and we will ask for the representatives to come forward. So the first award goes to Angel Smock from Browning Pierce Elementary School. Congratulations. The next award goes to C.L. Overtert, Jr., sixth grade center, recipient Savannah Hodge. Congratulations. From the Children's Reading Center Charter School, Kylie Holbrook. From the H. Miller, Joseph Trawell. James A. Long Elementary School, Summer Bishop. Robert H. Jenkins Middle School, Kalia Roberts. From Kelly Smith Elementary School, Rajay Grant. From Mellon Elementary School, Addison Rowe. From Mosley Elementary School, Jayadeen A. Palaca High School, Lauren Futch. Ben Albatas Academy. Shalay Jenkins. Shalay Jenkins. From Putnam Academy Arts and Sciences Incorporated, Samuel Santana. And last but not least, from Putnam Edge High School, Karina Ortiz LeBron. Can we get a round of applause for the parents of these individuals? We want to thank each and every one of you for a job well done. Always remember that education is the key to success. Never think that you're better than anybody, but never let anybody stop you from being your best. Thank you very much. Continue to do your work. We now take a five-minute reset, and we will come back when we're, we're started five minutes. We're gonna go ahead and recognize Jayadeen A. from Lowie Elementary School.
She was in our after-school program and got picked up. We glad that always thought for a reset.
Congratulations. We will now move into public comment. If there's anyone here that wants to speak during public comment, we wanna keep your comments to three minutes. No action will be taken on your discussion, but we will now open, we're now open the floor for public comment. Seeing the public comment, we'll move to the consent agenda, item three. On the consent agenda, we have item A, Adopt a Resolution Number 2015-11-04, awarding construction bid for the Airport Hangar Construction Project to share construction of North Florida LLC in amount of $1,219,966.
Mr. Mayor, can we, will we just pull that for the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Item A will be pulled. B, Adopt Resolution Number 2015-11-05, authorizing execution of Passero Associates W.O. Number 15-45R in the amount, in an amount NTE $120,000 for construction administration, resident engineering inspection, and quality assurance material testing for hangar construction projects at Palaca Municipal Airport. C, Adopt Resolution Number 2015-11-06, authorizing the submission of an application for federal aviation grant for design, environmental review, and permitting of airport obstruction removal, tree removal, and authorizing the city manager and clerk to execute and attest the final FAA grant agreement and all associate documents, associated documents. D, Make annual golf course advisory board appointments, Wilson Edwards and Jim Roach for PG, PMGA, George Oliver, and Jen Alberts for PWGA for one-year terms to expire January 2016. E, Reappoint Kathy Griffin to the Community Redevelopment Agency as DPI representative member for a four-year term to expire December 31st, 2018.
You wanna wait till we look at the presentation or just go ahead and accept?
Is there, is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Alright, motion to accept the consent agenda minus item A. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and promptly second. Call, question, question's been called. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We now move on to consent agenda, item A, Adopt a Resolution Number 2015-11-04.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Andrew Halesko from Passero Associates. Mr. Halesko has, has a long service with the city, serving as our airport engineer, and I just asked him briefly to just to give a brief project. I know he's met with the three new commissioners over the last few months, but just to give a description of what was bid and what we're recommending award based upon the bids received. Mr. Halesko, thank you.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
The city is fortunate that the Florida DOT has awarded three separate joint participation agreements to the city, all 100% funded for three different types of hangar construction and site improvements at the airport. The recommendation award to share construction is our recommendation to you to award improvements to four of the six hangar components. We actually had six different hangar components bid, with remaining funds inside the joint participation agreement, we're only able to award four of the six, even though we will continue to seek FPT funding for the final two components that are not recommended this evening. The result of the bids for shared construction is that the city will end up with ten new T-hangers, being one new eight-unit T-hanger, a two-hanger unit expansion, the completion of office and restrooms inside one of the professional box hangers, and the construction of one brand-new box hangar. So you will have twelve new and improved hangers at the airport. There will be two hangers on the west section of the airport that we still, we see additional funding for, which we will have twelve brand-new hangers at the airport, modified hangers. And I believe the current hangar weight was at the airport, it has thirty names on it. So that should be enough to get the hangar constructed here in 2015, and hopefully by the end of the year, they'll be out there brand-new. And Airport Manager John, you will get all them filled for you, then get additional room in the airport.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, can I say something? I would like to thank Mr. Halesko and his company and John, because we have moved the airport, the city, the deep and bow, right? The drainage, they extended the runways, and they are preparing us. When he first came on, I think I'm the only one sitting here. I was one of the people that was sitting here that hired him, and I, I asked him to prepare us to do global. And he has, he has kept that promise. We haven't got there yet, but he is preparing us to do it. And they are getting ready now. I wanted to remind us of a flying that we've had, and this is the third one, I think, that we've had. The fifth, excuse me, the fifth one, they're getting bigger and bigger, we're having more and more crowds, and people are finding out that we have an excellent airport. We got a really good terminal, and I'd like at our next meeting that we ask the board members on advisory board in and give them a thank you from us, from all of us for the good work they've done.
Mr. Mayor, one question.
Yes, sir.
When do you anticipate the four hangers that you're going, when do you expect completion of that particular, that base of the project?
Will you expect share to be under construction in less than thirty days? It will be a six-to-nine month construction project. So we expect to have them open before calendar, the calendar year 2015. But it is a six-to-nine month process. The order to have them delivered, they actually can't, you can get all of that empty construction until the middle of November. There will be construction underway at the airport in February.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for a job well done.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm aware, we approve consent item A under item three.
So motion seconded before. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir.
We will now move on to item four on the agenda, presentation report regarding advanced plasma arc gasification to energy. Proposal to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioner, Commission, Gary McIntyre, President of Agape Inc. Not seeing Mr. McIntyre, we will move the agenda. Moving on to item five, Citizens' Request for Police Ticketing Practices and Red Light Camera Policy Changes, Neil Letts. Just take your name and address for us, please.
It's Neil Letts, 160 Little Orange Lake Drive in Hawthorne. I think the red light cameras have been a step backwards from this town. I was stopped on a corner of Palm and Krill. The, I'm eighty years old, I remember we couldn't turn on red light, and when I was about fifteen years old, I decided it was okay to make a right turn on red lights. Now, traditionally, the police don't like rolling stops, even though they're very commonly done. The, you all have a copy of the law that says here, this is 3160083, 316075, a notice of violation of traffic citation cannot be issued if a driver is making a right-hand turn to careful, prudent, better, or an intersection of a right turn is permissible. I know in the larger cities, in Bradenton, they allow fifteen mile-an-hour right turns. I was stopped, and I did appeal, and I, and I watched the appeals process, and every right turn that I saw without a stop was, in my opinion, was very clearly done in a safer, prudent manner. So, a careful, prudent manner. So I would suggest, we cannot micromanage, the United States doesn't believe in micromanaging our lives. You create, the previous commission created a situation where we're, we're creating crime where none exists, and the cameras certainly had nothing to do with safety. If you, if you see the sheets that I handed out, they go on five pages of how they're gonna collect the money, and how a $160 fine on appeal if they reject it turns into $250 fine, which, again, for poorer people, which I'm not a poorer person, but all the people that I saw that were, came to appeal this right turn on Palm and Krill, were people who obviously didn't, couldn't afford this kind of fine. And in my opinion, I haven't killed anybody or injured anybody in sixty years of driving, sixty-five years of driving. I got my driver's license in 1948. So I would strongly urge you to shut these things down and tell the company to put them in to come and get them. I don't think they have nothing to do with traffic safety. There's another way to create a crime where there is no crime. An infraction is a crime, and this got a heavy penalty, which for poorer people, $250 is a lot of money, and probably a week's food for a lot of families. And, you know, I can afford it, but I don't think it's right. I think it's immoral to have those cameras. And I would strongly urge you to shut these things down and have them come and get them, in the interest of, of decency and trust and the basic goodness of, of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, there is a, I guess, in his request, in his, uh, application to be on the agenda, there is, he is making a request of admission to remove the intersection cameras requested. That's his request. Mr. Mayor, can I ask Chief Griffin a couple of questions, please?
Yes, sir.
Do we still have police officers reviewing the, the photos and the videos of individuals running red lights?
Yes, sir.
Right on red. I know several individuals that were stopped, and, and after they stopped, they made the turn on red, and that was caught at the same camera light that he was, that he was speaking about. And, and we still ticketed those individuals, even though they were said stopped, and then they made a right turn. We ticketed those individuals, and a couple of them, I guess a couple individuals actually appealed and they were tossed out. We ticketed those individuals, and a couple of them, I guess a couple individuals actually appealed and they were tossed out. My question is then, should we be ticketing individuals when they make a, a stop at the red light and then they turn right on red? Should we be ticketing those individuals?
Yes, sir, that's not in our guidelines. I understand the circumstances you're probably talking about, the ones where during the review process, some of these slipped through. But if we get contacted by someone after receiving a citation or notice of violation like that, we'll have the officer review it again, and if they find that they aired an issue with it, you have to be presented.
But I want, I want to make sure, because the law does say they can turn right on red. They do have to stop prior to making that turn, but we don't need to. And those that are slipping through, we may want to take a double tape. Look at those, those photos and those videos to make sure they're not slipping through those. We've, I've seen, I've seen at least two this year. You know, the latter of last year and this year.
Just a, just a point of clarification. Commissioner Norwood, if you look at the statute where it talks about the Mark 1 Traffic Safety Program, as it relates to red light, turning right on red, you actually, they lessen the standard of care. So you don't actually have to stop on red anymore, you have to use what's called prudent care. And so that's one of the issues that's out there. I'll go on record being the first to say that I'm not necessarily a component of red light cameras. But, and I guess the question to Mr. Letts is, did you, did you appeal your ticket? Did you ask for a hearing on your citation?
Yeah, the point I want to-
No, no, that's, that's just one question. Did you ask for-
Yes, I appealed it. Now, in my opinion, if you're going to pull up and make a right turn, which I've been doing for, I'm sorry. If you're going to pull up at a stop and make a right turn, you know. And when I was young, you couldn't turn on red light, period. Now, we've got yield signs on red lights where you, the thing of it is, you've got to pull out way beyond that stoplight. And any sensible person, I know nobody ever wants to hit anybody with their car. Because the visibility is good, there's no reason why you have to stop at that line, except somebody decided that you should put that line there. That line has no value. If you want to see what you're doing, right to left, excuse me, can I, this is 50 seconds. You've got to bolt your rear tire on that stop line so you can see the traffic coming in both directions. And I, and I see it every time, and you can do it yourself. If you pull up there and there's no, no traffic and no cup, and there's no people standing in the intersection, there should be no reason why you can't pull the front end of your car up, because the front end of your car is six feet ahead of your thing. You can go right out here on the corner, and if you stop on that red light, you can't see up the bridge to make a right or left turn. Now, this law clearly says you do not have to stop.
But it says you have to use due prudent care.
That's due prudent.
Well, that's, that's a subjective, that's, that's a subjective standard. You're arguing with a lawyer, but I'm not going to argue with you today. What we're going to do is we're going to listen to the argument. I have one question for you, you can have your seat right now. And so what we're going to do today is we're going to, we're going to go through this process. We'll make, we'll determine what we're going to do on it. I'm not a proponent of red light cameras, but I'm not a proponent of debating. And there are certain laws that are designated by the state that we have to follow if we've got programs in place. And until something changes, then we're, we're kind of forced to deal with what we have in place. And so I will be the first to tell you, we will examine it. We've asked the city attorney to look at the contract, to see what other options may be out there, and we'll deal with it from that standpoint, but that's not what's on the agenda today. We've heard from you, we're going to deal with this issue, and we're going to look at it, and we're going to look at it carefully. Chief, if you get an opportunity, look back at the cameras, see if there are any things that's going on, and maybe get with, get Mr. Holmes, and you guys can discuss it. No, sir. No, sir. At this time, is there any action that we're going to take on this? Are there any motions?
Well, I think on this, on the request, I don't think that we can take action on this request because of contracts and obligations and the things the city is under. So I recommend that we don't take any action on his request.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, the mayor and city manager have asked me to look at the contract that we have with our provider to see if it's possible for us to declare the contract to be void under contractual provisions without incurring a penalty. Because if we aren't able to declare the contract void and have that upheld by court, we would owe an awful lot of money to the provider, and I mean an awful lot of money, under the contract that's in place. So I've been asked and or directed to do that, and I'm in the process. But I would like to also note that I'm not aware of a single municipality or county in the state to this point that's declared their contract void because of the recent case laws and, and walked away from the contract. A lot of them are talking about it. Platte County is even debating the prospect of filing a declaratory judgment action to ask a court if the contract might be declared void. But the downside risk to the city of doing that is that you've got to pay the penalty clause in that contract, which is many hundred thousands of dollars, about $800,000. So we're looking at it, but the city's trying to be prudent and not put the city in a position of having to pay a lot of money under a contract unless we can, we think we can win.
And, and Mr. Holmes, while we're, while you're investigating that issue, can you also get with chief and possibly look at the issue as it relates to suspension of right-hand turn signals? If there's any issue pertaining to the camera, any malfunctioning? As it relates to that issue, so that we can deal with those, and if so, maybe give us a, give us some breakdown as to where we are. Mr. Bickers. Mr. Bickers? Yes, sir, you can come forward.
Thank you, because tools there, Dr. King, to collect the floor, please, if you will. I was here when the chief was talking about the red light cameras, and he specifically said that we would not be under a contract where there would be a penalty if we want to take the cameras out. What happened to that? Because I specifically, I was right here, he said, there's no penalty, anytime you want to take them out, you can take them out. Somebody will remember this?
I can't say I remember it.
You don't know?
I can't, I can't say that I remember. We can go back, we can go back and look at it.
Am I not a person that can remember that?
Well, they can look it up for us.
You can say it's a penalty, you can say what you like, but it basically requires us to pay the difference between the revenue that they have earned and the cost of all of the equipment, and that difference is about $800,000. So maybe my use of the term penalty is not an accurate term.
That was a specific, he said, to put the equipment up and take it out, there will be no charge. Anytime we want to take them out, they put them up, there will be no charge. I remember specifically saying that.
The chief, you said, the chief of police?
Right here, he said that there will be no cost to remove the cameras when we got ready.
I don't know if they're, if they're reading that, I just know what the contract says.
Maybe I went to meet the wrong people.
I can, I can assure you that we will look into it, and we will look at every avenue. And Mr. Letts, I will address whatever concerns you have after the meeting, if you'll stay around. Moving on, seeing that no action's been taken on item, on item number five, we will move to item six on the agenda. Resolution authorizing the submittal of an application to FDEP for the city's wastewater treatment plant upgrade project by El Sol's Treatment System to be included in the priority list for the Clean Water State revolving fund loan program. Motion. Is the motion on the floor?
A resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida requesting the inclusion of the city's wastewater improvement project on the Florida Department of Environmental Protection State revolving fund priority list.
This is motion on the floor, the second. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. Roll call, Madam Clark.
Commissioner Borum?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes, vote of five to zero. Moving to item seven, resolution authorizing execution of a letter of under, of a letter of understanding with the Palatka Housing Authority regarding the development and construction of single-family housing units on 923 and 918 Laurel Street, plus two other lots in the city of Palatka, and reconsideration and certification of PHA's annual five-year plan FYI 2015 through 2019, adopt table during session of 1/8/15. Staff recommendation to continue.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm aware staff, accept staff recommendation to continue in February 12, 2015.
This is motion on the floor?
Second.
This is the second, any discussion? We've got one comment card from John Nelson. You come up to the podium, sir. And he wants to discuss items number seven and eight.
John Nelson, Palatka Housing Authority, 400 North 15th Street. The Housing Authority has received two extensions for following our annual plan. And those extensions were based upon a scheduled workshop that did not occur. It won't occur until 26th of January. If, in fact, we hold a commission meeting with 12 to discuss the results of the workshop on 26th, that would put the Housing Authority in jeopardy of violating our annual plan requirements. Could I go back to HUD and ask them for a third extension? Probably could, maybe. But I don't think that I should, since how the workshop was scheduled for last week and not 26th of January. So I'm asking that the commission consider, in deference to the staff recommendation, holding an emergency meeting following the workshop, be it the evening of the workshop or two or three days following that, to either vote yes or no on the resolutions, vote in seven and eight.
Mr. Nelson, in the interim, can you ask, can you see if you can get that, can you see if you can get one more extension passed the 12th date so that we can actually try to have the workshop and not be up under the gun? And if you can do that, I think that would be helpful as well.
Well, the present extension goes to February 6.
Can you ask them for at least another week that will put us past the 12th date?
I can certainly try and do that, but I'm not really hopeful. As was noted, the statute says that plans to be in 75 days following, prior to the interruptive hearing. So I'm not opposed to asking, but I'm also asking that the commission consider having an emergency meeting following that so that we don't have to go back in and burn up another chip with HUD.
Is there, you've heard Mr. Nelson's request, thank you, sir. You've heard Mr. Nelson's request. Is there any further discussion?
In light of that, I'd like to amend my motion, if you can, to the motion void containers on the 12th, if necessary, especially prior to that meeting, if necessary.
There's a motion amendment, is it friendly to the second?
Second.
You don't need a second.
Could you restate that last part?
There's a motion to, there's a motion to table until the 12th, and if we're unable to, and if we're unable to table this meeting until the 12th, he would ask that there be an emergency meeting in lieu of the 12th date.
If the extension is-
If the extension can't be granted. There's a, there's a motion, is that friendly to your second?
Second.
The motion is made, and it's friendly to the second. Is there any further discussion?
Providing, providing, we can get notification.
I have a point of clarification. How's that emergency meeting to be called?
We would have to, it would have to be noticed with, basically, it would have to be at least noticed with 24 hours.
He's going to call it, though.
If Mr. Nelson can't get the extension, he's going to notify the city manager, and the city manager should be called at the emergency meeting.
Prior to the 6th. So you got until the 6th to submit, correct?
Yes, at this point, yes, I do.
And so we will have that information prior to, can you get that information to us fairly quickly?
Yes.
We can do it, based on our charter, 24 hours. And we've already got, authorization is inside of the, it's on the motion.
And just, yeah, I guess for clarification, too, rather than tabling, we're continuing.
Is that friendly?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion to continue, subject to an emergency meeting, verification. Is any more discussion? Seeing no, seeing no discussion, questions then call, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Borum?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote of five to zero. Moving on to item number eight, reconsideration of the motion excluding paragraph seven from the inclusion of execution of the Palatka Housing Authority annual forms. These items carry, it carries on us in continuation of item seven.
We, I'd like to make the recommendation that we continue also to the 12th of February, unless an extension is not granted, and we have to have our special meetings called by the city manager.
This is motion in the second. Any discussion? Call the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Borum?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote of five to zero. Moving on to our public hearing. Item number nine, ordinance, planning board recommendation to amend the municipal code, chapter 54, article 2, to amend membership duties and responsibilities of the Palatka Planning Board, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida amending chapter 54, article 2 of the Palatka Municipal Code to revise membership organization duties and various, and remove various obsolete and other rules governing the city planning board, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So, motion made, approved. Is there a second? Motion made, seconded.
This is a house confirmation, Mr. M. R.
And I was talking to Mr. Crowe about it, that as people go in there, it's for the nursing home. But if more houses go in there in the area, they need to remind them when they come to do that, that it's in our airport.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood.
This is number, number nine.
I see.
We're now moving to public hearing on item number nine. Is there anyone who wants to speak, public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, can we get the, uh-
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're now close, public hearing, Mr. Crowe.
Uh, thank you for answering, I have some questions. I think briefly, we talked a little about this at last meeting, but planning board chair and planning board felt important to, ordinance is going to actively reflect their duties and responsibilities. So this is the housekeeping measures which we would ask. The only thing I would add is that we are setting the members, the number of members, eight members at this point. That's the number of members we have. We recently appointed a member, we didn't want to have to ask them to leave. When we lose another member by attrition, I think the goal of the planning board was we would go back down to seven members, but we don't want to do that until attrition occurs.
Thank you, sir. This is the motion on the floor, the second. Call the question, roll call, please.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Borum?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries, vote of five to zero. Item number 10, ordinance, planning board recommendation to rezone 110 K. Larkin Drive from C. 2 Intensive Commercial to R. 3 Multi-Family Residential, Southern Medical Associates Incorporated owner, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palatka, Florida be amended from C. 2 Intensive Commercial to R. 3 Residential Multi-Family for the following property, 110 K. Larkin Drive, Section 3, Township 10 South, Range 26 East, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
We're now moving to public comment. Is there any? Just one second. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close our public hearing. This is a motion in the second. Is there any discussion?
Question.
Questions then call, roll call, please.
Mr. Borum?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes. Motion carries, vote of five to zero.
I'd like to say I was trying to get this reminder into the memory of people. As we're growing, that airport is growing and when they put apartments and housing out there, they need to be reminded that there will be noise and that it will not stop the progress of the city when we start going in today.
Moving the agenda to item number 11, ordinance, planning board recommendation to amend zoning code to allow for reduced parking spaces, parking space size for non-public parking, second reading, Madam Court.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida reducing parking space dimensions to nine feet by 18 feet for non-public parking, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
This is motion in the second, we're now open, we're now opening up our public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during public hearing? Seeing that, motion in the second have been made. Call the question, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Bora?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes. Motion carries, five to zero.
Now item 12, discussion, commission liaison, representative appointments beginning January of 2015. Mr. Griffigs.
Those are for the three remaining vacancies that we have. One is pre-committee liaison, one is downtown Palatka each liaison, and the other is the St. John's River Water Management District Liaison.
I have a request, if it's okay with the board, that we asked former Commissioner, Ms. Allegra Kittens, if she was willing to continue to serve on the tree committee board that she was previously serving on in capacity.
I have already asked her if she would like to join in as a member, that she's considering. Okay. And would you like for her to be the one to break back reports if necessary?
If that's okay.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Kittens, can you come forward?
I see your back there.
It's good to see you.
Allegra Kittens, 1027 South 15th Street. I have been considering being the liaison to the tree committee and gets a estimate about it, and I decided last night that I will accept it if the commission wants me to.
Yes, ma'am, we thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
That's going without a motion?
Yes, sir.
This is motion in the second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five to zero. I will be the liaison for, if it's okay with you guys, I'm okay with downtown, the D.P.I. And that leaves. And we've got one, one last appointment, which is St. John's River Water Management District.
Second?
Some motion in the second. Just a bit of unreadiness, can we also address, for house, for sake of time, can we also address St. John's River Water Management, was formerly held by Commissioner Lear?
I'm with Commissioner Bora.
I would like to know a little bit more about that, that board and before I commit.
Can that be friendly to the motion in the second that we have previously to add Commissioner Bora to St. John's River Water Management? We've got that, by general consent, all in favor? Say aye. Motion carries. City manager and administrative reports.
I, I got three things, Your Honor. I believe at the last, did Mr. Crow leave?
Yes, he did.
Oh, my gosh, I can't believe he left, okay. I think, I believe at the last meeting, when we discussed the parking conditions, the width and length of parking in general, I think the commission had some interest in considering that citywide, so I believe Mr. Crow was going to proceed with discussion of that topic at the next planning board meeting and that he'll bring back any future amendments or recommendations on changing those width and length of parking space, I just want to bring that up for everybody to understand. We're, we are having a workshop on the, the public housing matter on Monday, January 26th at 5:30 P.M. Everybody's invited, I did call the county and ask them for representation and I had some other interested groups saying they were going to attend and provide comments at, at the workshop. The airport flying, I think Commissioner Brown talked about, is, has been postponed from this Saturday to January 31st, so hopefully everybody can come out and hopefully we have great weather. I was fortunate today to be able to take a quick ride in a Ford 1929 tri-loter and it was quite an experience, so that's all I have, sir.
See you, you have anything?
Second, assuming we're in, I've got some culture that has been changed, I want to reach the commissioners, will they pass those down? And the decision to postpone that was based on a low threat system that's been moving across the Gulf of Mexico threatening to really blanket us with a lot of rain starting tomorrow and on into Saturday. I thought that we're, that the pilots just would not show up. In addition to that, the car parking situation out there for evening department and grass, that area between the fence and Highway 100 could have turned into a mud bog and been a bad situation. So it really was a hard decision thinking about the rains, if it still comes driving, could that mud bog get in the way?
And then it gives us reasons, because that's a reason we can make it now.
And here's a, the second item is, we've got classic aircraft out to the airport now, I'd like to show everybody. Advertise it out of, it gets a 1929 Ford tri-loter, it was the country's first commercial airliner. And this thing is restored and maintained by the Experimental Aircraft Association, which if you're familiar with that organization, they put on the country's largest flying every year up in Wisconsin. And that, that sees about a half a million people over a five or six day period. You can imagine, half a million aviation enthusiasts that sit on the airport. It's really something, so it's a real big organization. They have two of these, one tours the western half of the United States, this one tours the eastern half. It really is a classic relic, so if you don't fly one, please come up to the airport and take a look at it, take some pictures. But it is a beautiful machine.
Yeah, I can add, somebody has called me to ask me how much for rides, how much for the ride on it, and how much for plane rides during the, um.
During flying?
Mm-hmm. It's right on the advertising, if you walk up for adults, it's $75. You can save $5 if you, if you buy advance tickets online at www.flyafford.org. And children under 17 is $50. You see the yellow biplane on the advertising poster there, let me offer this, if you're interested, I would be glad to escort you out onto the airfield and watch them strap you into this open pilot plane.
We're going to volunteer, is there more of you?
Be glad to escort, personally escort you out there and watch that. That's a, a real thrill. Rides on that aircraft are, are $50 apiece. And the good thing about it is, two of you can go together, so they bond to each other. And if a helicopter coming, it, it carries three people and it will be $75 a ride. For instance, if three people go, it's $25 apiece. Two people go, you split that, if one person goes, it's $75, and every time it leaves the ground, so. But anyway, they're very entertaining, both the biplane and the helicopter, come and go every few minutes and it's just entertaining afternoon, so. Again, when you come coming again, I'd be glad to take you out there.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Linity, you have anything? Mr. Linity, you have anything?
I'm sorry, sir, wait a minute.
Chief, you have anything?
Just, I'd like to remind everybody, March 28th is our ninth annual Continental Higher Education Golf Tournament. The fundraiser that is what you purchase our, you know, higher education supplies, colored books, iPads, TVs, maybe, uh, that's where we get the money. First eight tournaments raise over 80,000. So, I'm pretty proud of it and we want to have another successful one this year. Guys are welcome to stop out and get introduced, and it's one of the largest fundraiser tournaments in Palatka.
Yes, sir, thank you. Chief Griffin. Mr. Reddick.
Our wine stroll on Saturday night, there'll be no rain. Is that a problem? Is that a problem?
He smiled at John, he canceled the rain.
Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Griffigs. Mr. Holmes? This is Zembor. Anything else, sir? Mr. Norwood?
Mr. Mayor, we've got a lot of projects that's going on right now in the Hundred Block and we've got the hotel, the, uh, environmental center. We've also got the, uh, the condominiums, all those projects are going on. What I'd like to do is ask the city manager if he could give a brief international overview of those projects and how they're advancing along every knee, so that, that way the public would know what type of progress we're making and if there are any issues that, that we need to address, or that they may be addressing, if that may be delaying projects, or if they are there on time, or what have you, if you would.
We can do that.
Mr. Bora? Mr. Brown?
Our volunteer program prior to Palatka will have a meeting on January the 26th, and we'll be meeting at 12 o'clock at the, at the jail meeting room that they have for us for that day. And if things work out right, we have planned to try to do a workday on the 31st of January. That will be decided on the 26th. Uh, the other thing is, we have been trying to talk to our state representative, Ben Don, and they called today to say that he can meet with us on January the 29th at 2 o'clock. And we need to get it into the Pinkwell and Pinkwell's calendar. Is that all right then, or you all to give it to him at 2 o'clock at his office?
It may be hard for me, I think I got mediation that day, but we'll, I'll try to make whatever necessary adjustments to get there.
I need to call him, I'm just asking because I have to call his office back to verify. And if we need to change, you want to check the sheet, you need to change the schedule, I will leave it right.
I'll try to see if we can get it adjusted, but I've spoken with him as well, so I can move it forward.
Uh, the other thing is, during the time I sat at P.I.V., I've always looked for ways of grant funds and grant money. And I went to one of my lead special meetings and while I was there, I asked one of our people there to look up some state grants for us. I have, I have gotten the listing for you, how to get in touch with them, so that if you have projects and a person to get in touch with to lead, they'll help us to find something that works for you. And so, if you will keep those in your file, as I find more, I'll be passing them along to you so we can always keep up with where we can find other funding. That's it, Bora.
Mr. Campbell?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of things, uh, last Friday, we had an opportunity to sit down with the Florida Grape Growers Association. Uh, it was a group of roughly 70 individuals who came into Palatka to host their annual conference. Their main office is in Yelvington, it's off of Yelvington Road, it's Palatka. But, but the group came from Maine, you had people that came as far as Maine and New Jersey, and from South Florida as well. It was an awesome group, you had Florida A&amp;M who brought in their horticultural department. It was a great presentation and it's something that I, I encourage all of our citizens to look at, it's an opportunity. This group is enthused about being in Palatka, they're looking at coming here for a third year for their annual conference. And I definitely had a pretty good time speaking with the grape growers. Aside from that, we've talked about the Palatka Pride Initiative and we've also, one of the conversations we had recently was, uh, seeing what we could do and explore options that relates to recreation and bringing life to our parks for our young people. And so, uh, city manager, we would like to get with Mr. Griffin, we've talked about it, we've had a volunteer from staff who's willing to come in and work with some of the recreational activities to see if that's an option. We definitely want to bring that to the commission, once we get more information on it, but we want you to keep it in the back of your minds, that we're looking at trying to find ways to bring life to our parks so that we can work towards prevention with our young people.
We can put that on the agenda, February 12th.
Yes, sir, that'd be fun.
And there are grants by our organization that we can probably pull out from the grant book, that the grant information we bring to us.
And we, and we've explored some of those, and there are a lot, there's a lot of information that we got from the city's meeting as well. But I wanted to just have you guys put that in the back of your mind, other than that, I've got nothing else.
I would like to commend Main Street for the food truck rally, I really enjoyed myself when I had the opportunity to grace the stage and seeing the choir community and watching it.
And before we close out, there's one last thing, and if, if anyone here, if you've, if you've been watching the news and you've looked, there was a great tragedy that hit our community over the last week. And there were, and many lives within our community were really affected by that. I would ask that we take a moment of silence for the families and all the individuals that have been affected. As we deal with these issues, there are three families that are hurting within our community, there are a lot of people who've been affected, children have been affected, and, and I think it's incumbent upon us as citizens and as this commission to make sure that we look at some of the issues that are involved inside of this tragic situation. But it, you know, and, and things happen for a reason and we can't question why it happens, but the one thing that we can do is we can look at the situation and figure out what can we do to inform our citizens more? And what can we do to be more aware of what people are going through and, and how, how are citizens hurt? And so I, I would just ask that if we can, maybe Commissioner Norwood, could you lead us in a moment of prayer? And prayer as we recognize the families and, and have some brief prayer for them?
Yes. No standing. Most gracious of the lasting God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity of God to be able to approach your throne. We know we only, we can only approach you through your son, Jesus. Father, we stand now on behalf of those that are hurting and those that are bereaved right now, Father. We ask that you give them strength, give them encouragement, oh, Father. Allow them to know, God, that there is no earthless sorrow, that heaven cannot heal. Allow them to understand that they will continue to look to the hills from which comes their help. And know that all their help coming from you. And Father, we pray now, Heavenly Father, that even as they don't understand, that, Father, that you will bridge the gap so that they will be comforted in this time. And as you comfort them, oh, Heavenly Father, we will be ever careful to give you the glory. For us, in Jesus' name we do ask and we do pray, amen.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made. adjourned by general consent.